Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Committee on Hearings. And we are interviewing today for four various appointments and positions. Madam Clark, we'll read the purpose of the first interview. Let's go with Erin Abrams, please, since she's here.
Bill number 67, resolution appointing Karen Abrams as Director of City Planning.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. I think everyone here knows you and has worked with you in the past. And we're excited to welcome you back to the City Council table. Could you give a little synopsis about yourself? Do you want to say just your name and what you hope to bring to the position? Or anything you want to share publicly? Just a few comments and then council members will do the interview. Relax because we're good.
Because we're good.
I want to make sure that you can hit me with my mask on also.
It's up to you.
Okay, all right. Okay.
We're far enough away.
Okay.
No deductions if you decide to take your mask off.
I'm going to leave it on. My mom's watching, so I'm going to leave it on so she knows.
And I'm just going to begin by saying we all, many of us have worked with you and have a really great relationship with you. Excited to learn a little bit more about what you think you're going to bring to the table and how we can work with you to make Pittsburgh Planning, City Planning Department, a great department. And so I've had some brief conversations. I know others have. So I'll turn it over to you and see if there's some things you feel comfortable sharing.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much. And thank you all for being here with me. And it's an honor to be here, back at the city of Pittsburgh. My name is Karen Abrams. I live in Hazelwood neighborhood. I was born in the Bronx, New York. But, you know, I wound up and raised in Harlem, New York for most of my life and ended up here about four years later. So just briefly, just my experience in Pittsburgh. I began here, I went to grad school here at the Brock University up north. I got my master's degree in sustainable systems. I then took an internship at Allee County Economic Development for a year while I was doing my greenhouse gas emissions inventory for the school. Ended up at the Urban redevelopment authority after that, working primarily in African-American neighborhoods throughout the city, around various land use projects, some planning with the help of Department of City Planning. And just did really incredible engagement work. Took a year off from that and had a LOEB fellowship at the Harvard School of Design, where I worked primarily with urban design students, professors and faculty, both at Harvard University and MIT, and came back to the city after that. After that LOEB fellowship year to join the Heinz Endowments as the Equity Development Program Officer, where I was working for about four years. And so I can, I mean, I can add, you know, just the things that, you know, I've been thinking about for city planning and the future of city planning. I deeply believe in the work around equity. It's been really what I've been doing for the past 10 years in the city. Left and came back to do more. And it's really the foundation for which I've done most of my work here. I also believe that we have some challenges with climate change, which have real impacts on our most vulnerable neighborhoods. And these are, you know, marginalized communities historically. These are working class families. And really addressing the transition from, you know, what we call extractive economies, which, you know, costs air pollution, other problems, public health issues. And really looking at transitioning to a more regenerative economy, which where we use our natural resources that are renewable. And that's happening in the department right now. We have incredible staff throughout the entire department, working on those very things. And so we want to continue with that work and really deepen it, make it foundational with a heavy focus on engaging communities and not just in ways that we're just listening to them, but really taking their ideas. These communities have been marginalized for a very long time, oftentimes with intention. And so really looking at the tools that we can use at city planning, along with our partners in other departments, as well as city council, to make sure that they have the resources that, you know, they need to have their voices heard, as well as to really understand their unique skills and abilities and talents that they can bring to the city. We want everybody to prosper. In order to do that, we have to actually dig in and make a real foundation for people.
Thank you. And I'm going to begin with Councilman Kraus, previous president for six years and a big fan of yours. But I will also say, I also sat with you next in the Leon Bank meetings. And I loved how you were such a champion for the community. So I was honored to participate with you.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. So we got to talk a little bit last week, not long enough, but a little bit to try to catch up. And I was trying to remember how you and I met. And I can't for the life of me remember how that came to be. But I always remember the relationship as being very positive, very positive. And we seem to view the world through a very similar lens, you know, in terms of what we'd like the world to be and, you know, what our role is in crafting it to become that. Karen was very instrumental in assisting in the formation of the idea of redeveloping Belssover School, though she didn't play a direct role. But we were struggling. We had such, such good energy in Belssover and so many people that were active and engaged, but somehow not quite focused on sort of like, you know, I don't know how to work collectively and cooperatively. But out of some work that Karen assisted us with doing, and we began to see some of those sort of changes take root in Belssover. And out of that was birthed what's known as the Belssover consensus group, where everybody realized just how important it is to row the boat together, right? And to sort of all focus on sort of, you know, a common idea, if you will. And through that and some other processes, the idea of the school being up for sale and our ability to actually secure it by the community. The community actually purchased the school and started the journey, very scary journey, very, very scary journey of taking on a massive property like that and own it on a local level and then try to figure out how do we figure out how to develop this.
I want, yeah.
Yeah. We went back and forth a number of times, up and down, and should we or shouldn't we? And what have we done? And oh my God, what were we thinking and all that? But with the help of the Heinz Endowments, which was instrumental in helping, and Karen was with Heinz Endowments at that time, helping us
A forgiver.
Get a little bit of money to set aside to help secure the building and fix the roof and get some staff in place. We just, we started to sort of chug along. So out of that, we have been able to hire a contractor. And out of that, we went to the zoning board for our first zoning approvals on Thursday morning. And tomorrow at four o'clock, we present in the mayor's office the scope of the work and where we are, what we've done, what our vision is, and how to get into this current stream of funding, which will, I think, applications are May-June for the round of senior tax credit funding. And so we're like, we're well on our way. But I say all that to say, it was just really, just a friendship and sort of casual conversation of how to kind of do things that happened. And, you know, here we are today. So I think, I just, you know, I'm just really just excited that you're coming to the city in really any capacity. But the idea that you're coming into the Department of Planning, that really intrigues me. That really, really intrigues me because part of my frustration working in municipal government is a lack of focus on planning for success. We tend to police failure and not plan for success, right? And that's, there's, there's a whole different dynamic to planning for success. And I think you, I think you're spot on in your ability to do that. So let me talk just very briefly about the reality of the situation that we're in right now. We, we are financially stable, secure for this moment in time. The ARPA monies will expire by the end of 2023. We're not 100% sure where we might be in our finances. We don't know where the pandemic may be taking us or not taking us, God forbid, and what our finances might ultimately look like at the end of '23. We're, you know. So I was just curious what your thoughts were. I mean, resource is so incredibly important to do the work that we want to do. And I just was sort of wondering kind of what your thoughts around the future and our, you know, our vision versus our ability to be able to provide the resource to accomplish those goals we set for us.
Right. Thank you for the question. It's a very important one. And I appreciate all the kind things that you've said and look forward to working in Belssover as well. I mean, that's a really exciting project. So it was a long time coming. And, I mean, and to that point, really, I mean, we have to really think about where we want to, where we want to see ourselves in the future. And, you know, we, we all have had adversity at times, but it never really stops us from dreaming the big dreams and figuring out how to collectively get there. I do hope that, you know, this pandemic is, it's been scary for so many reasons. Not obviously because of all the loss of life in long-term illness, but obviously because there's uncertainty about when it's going to end. And so that needs to be part of our, our planning processes, right? How do we actually prepare for these, for these instances? Because they will come. But we don't, doesn't mean that we can't dream big about what we want to see our, our community to be, our city to be, our neighborhoods to be, our blocks to be. And there are so many people who are rooting for the success of the city, who want to stay in the city. And they need to be a part of that vision setting. We need to understand what their needs are. And we need to understand how to accommodate them because they are much of the success of the city as, as anybody else is, but never really had a chance to participate. That means a lot to people. And when they rally behind people who believe in them, all wonderful things can happen. And that's really the root of equity. You know, how do we make sure that we do the best that we can with what we have? There's a very practical answer to your question as well, which, you know, it goes back to some extent to the conversation about sustainability and about understanding how much resources we have and what we can do and how to prioritize those things. It doesn't mean that we prioritize in what we've always prioritized, but maybe we're something very different. Doing the same thing over and over again, you know, doesn't necessarily come with the same as what you really want. Innovation is extremely important in this time. Trying new things out is extremely important in this time. And while you said about the school, it's very scary to have done it, but look at where the school is now. And so that same approach is kind of how, you know, I see the work that I do. We have to really try to figure out together, you know, with all voices included, how we go, how we get past this. Or at least how we succeed in the, in the, you know, the darkness that we sometimes, if some of us are feeling. That's addressing a lot of community trauma also. There's communities and traumas for so many reasons. And acknowledging that is very important to how we move on because if we don't understand the trauma, we can't move on from it. And that's the success in that, right? And they're small steps, incremental steps. They're big steps that we can definitely take. One of the department's divisions, I'm sorry, within Department of City Planning is sustainability and resilience. And they're, they are like almost, you know, they're, they're tasked with making our fleet sustainable and our buildings sustainable, our fleet sort of turn to electric. But the things that they're thinking about in a very innovative way are truly remarkable. How we, how we are sustainable, how we do look at resource allocation. And, you know, obviously, just coming here in the last three weeks, looking at what they're doing, how do they, how do we use that sort of approach throughout the City Planning Department and quite possibly throughout city government? Wanting to, to really kind of think about how they communicate and connect their ideas to community in innovative ways. You know, I think, you know, we're looking at some serious times around budget and the work that we have to do ahead of us. And we're really thinking about how we survive with what we have. But it's been done before. And I'm a, I'm a student of history and we've gotten out of tough places before and we'll do it again.
Can I ask one more question that'll stop? You have three members of Southwest Pittsburgh here. And, you know, and, and, and very, very, very strongly committed to economic equity and investment in southwest of Pittsburgh. I kind of lost my train of thought there. But how, how do I best want to say how we collectively?
Best to better take care of southwest of Pittsburgh.
I want to try to be very kind and polite. There are, there are genuine concerns among the members that represent southwest Pittsburgh that the investment has not always been a priority. You know, you, you go, you go north and east of the city. It's, you know, business will fall to rooftops. That's the tradition, correct? So you go northwest of the city, you'll see stadiums, you'll see casinos, you will see ballparks, you will see a transit stop, a major transit stop. You will see Crate and Barrel Nordstrom, Saks Fifth Avenue, on, on and on and on and on, right? Because business is going to, business will locate there to support population. You go southwest of the river, you pretty much have some riverfront development in terms of South Shore that came in under the Murphy administration and South Side Works, which came in also under the Murphy administration. But then head out and tell me what other kinds of real investments you've seen southwest river. We end up with Century 3 Mall, pretty much, at the end of that rainbow, right? And so I think there's, there's physical evidence to show that there has not necessarily been, you know, a focus on that. You know, east of the city, we all know the story of, you know, what happened to New celebrity and, and all those kinds of things. And even some desire to see future expansion into Wilkinsburg and places like that. Oh, I just, I just sort of put that out there that I think there's, there's more than an emotional request. I think there's physical evidence to say, hmm, perhaps, you know, we could do a little bit better. And then lastly, a downtown. And, and, and how, 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 how? We have been so very lucky here for generations to have a healthy downtown that, that even through lots and lots of difficult times has survived and really lived to be the core of the city. This is the first time in my life that I'm genuinely concerned about how we are going to repopulate downtown. And not just for the, for the people and, and the fact that we need one another and we need to gather and socialize and all those kinds of things, but real estate, property tax and brick and mortar. And if companies decide that those are no longer viable options and people should be connected to phones at homes and what happens to property tax? And if property tax goes, by the way, so what happens to the budget? And what happens, you know, and all that. So any, any ideas, any thoughts around how we are going to reactivate or encourage people to reactivate downtown?
Yeah, that's, I think, I'm looking at both of your statements and questions and they're actually kind of related. And, and I live, I used to live in East Allegheny and I would walk to work. And I would spend a lot of time downtown, outside of just working downtown. And so that was an important, it was an important area. And I'm down here now almost every day and I see what you're seeing. But noticing that through the pandemic, people obviously stayed home, but their neighborhoods became really big hubs of, of, of economic interest. I mean, they, they used, you know, local resources, very hyper-local resources in their neighborhoods. They, the restaurants probably got more business during the pandemic than they had ever been. So understanding how the patterns of people's patterns and their behaviors, their desire to work from home is going to have a really devastating impact on downtown. But there are opportunities in that, in the neighborhoods. And so this is not to say that that solves, that solves the neighborhood problem because we solve a downtown problem. And there are a number of us in the City Planning Department that are thinking about this. Usually planning is thinking about this. We also have, you know, our public art and civic design communities thinking about this in very serious ways because of the cultural district. And so I know that at the Heinz Endowments has been something of a concern as well in all the foundations. And so I think it's, it's going to take a lot of us thinking about this Allegheny conference. You know, they are thinking about it obviously as well. And so I have been thinking about this. It's, it's obviously part of, of my responsibility as the planning director and the staff at the, at the Department of City Planning to be thinking about these things. And these are just observations that I've made in the past, what, six months? But really starting to dig into that kind of work. And which is, which is also why I think it would be, you know, I think forging PGH, you know, I think it kind of started back up at a really good time in the pandemic because that's when you get to plan how to respond to these things. And we're not the only city, as you know, that's dealing with this. And so, you know, we need to be aware of what other cities are also doing to address this. And I'm very well aware of it. It's a huge concern of obviously the administration as well as, you know, several of our departments and our authorities as well. So thank you for raising that. It has been part of the conversation with regard to this. I mean, I'm hoping, I hope I gave you an answer that, I mean.
I don't know that there is a
I don't know, but, but it's a, I mean, it is something that I think about whenever I walk out to try to buy lunch, right? Like you see places that, you know, you relied on and they're not there. And it's, it's, and then the ripple effect of that on so many people. So we have a lot of work to do. And, you know, I, and that really makes, makes the collaborative, the collaborative nature of our work even more important. You know, there have been redevelopment authority, which is where I worked, is an important partner in economic development. We have to use the, the, you know, our, support our businesses and get, make sure that they get out and support it. Our independent businesses here in the city of Pittsburgh. So something to definitely think about. And thank you for raising this, this forum because I think it's very important. I'm glad that the three of you are meeting because the southwest communities, because I think you all have a lot in common. The mayor often talks about, you know, breaking down barriers and getting people together. And because of the topography of your, of your, that part of the town, it's definitely based off of not actual boundaries, but actually about the photography. And so understanding those things and having our strategic planning department work with the three of you. I mean, I love the fact that, you know, you've gotten together. That's what this is all about. And working with this urban, the city planners and that, and that, the strategic neighborhood city planners, working with city and building resilience, working with really all of the department, all the divisions in city planning to really address that regional issue. Because this is, that's a region. It's not just the three, it's not just three districts, it's a region. And it's connected to the county, obviously. So there are partnerships that, I mean, to explore that, you know, part of the county, since part of that, part of that district, those districts touch the county and part of the city. I know there's, there was, I'm not sure if it's there anymore, the southwest PA, did they? They're not. Yeah, so I know there is a, there is an organization that kind of works with both the county and the city. I know, and it's been a while and I'm, I apologize to that organization, but they were doing some pretty decent work down there at some point. But again, like we have planners who are dedicated to those areas, so. Yes, yes, it is.
One last thing, I swear to God.
This is wonderful. I appreciate all of this.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The, but the, one of the best, the best definition of affordable housing that I have ever heard actually came from Councilman Burgess. And so I'm going to give him credit for this. That it's really about understanding your population and your housing stock. If you were able to inventory your population in terms of all the different demographics and, and set wages to the different demographics and then the housing stock that you had and marry your, your financial ability to, to purchase housing stock, what would it look like if you were able to compare those two columns? This is, this is the population, this is the housing stock, this is where we have an overabundance, this is where we have a deficit. And how do we then try to equalize that so that private partner, not just public, but private and public partnerships are able to fill in those gaps of where we are deficit in providing housing stock to meet specific income levels? How do we, you know, you have, you know, you have the knowledge to do these kinds of things, but how do we get to a point to where we can understand that there, there is a market? There, there is ability for a public and private to enter together and to find ways to create housing stock that meets the needs and income levels of those constituencies that we serve?
No, I, I would agree that we, I mean, housing is such a challenging, but important, like essential part of the work that we need to do. It's something that, that obviously we just, we're just finishing up our housing needs assessment report at the City Planning Department that Christopher, Christopher Corbett pulled together with a team of people, including probably residents and some of you here. But the housing, so I'll just say this. Affordable housing is housing that we can all afford, right? So I think that we have to, everybody. It's not a specific demographic, it needs to be clear. Right. So, and also thinking about housing, not in its own siloed context, but in the context of everything. The challenging thing about the housing conversation is that it becomes a housing conversation as opposed to a housing and an economic development conversation, a housing and jobs conversation, a housing and food access conversation. And so I'm, this is, this is something that's been a challenge for me because there's so many components and so many people who are advocating for so many different things around housing that everything gets lost in the conversation as opposed to what are the things that we need to do to have people be able to afford the housing that we have? And what does the future look like for those individuals? I do believe that, and then obviously paying for it as well. There are very, there are a lot of different ways to approach this. And I would love to hear more about what Councilmember Burgess is suggesting because we need all the help we can get around it. But I do want to just be clear that my opinion about this is that it's not a siloed conversation. And I, and I, and I think that we're all responsible and all sectors are responsible for talking about housing. And financing it has always been a challenge in certain parts of our city and not in others. And understanding how that happens, how that, how that works is essential to keeping people in place and around, you know, their amenities, around good schools. But I do, but, but I mean, well, I mean, I think that it's, it's a, it's a, it's a conversation that we all need to have. But from a planning, from a planning perspective, I should say, we can do, we can pull up the data around where things are, where housing needs are. But also want to make sure that we're talking about jobs as well and talking about environmental issues as well. I mean, we, housing is one thing, but making sure that people are made whole when that housing is created is such an important part of what we need to be thinking about as well.
Making people whole is a, is a number of different facets.
It's a number of different facets. I'm sorry if I didn't answer your question.
You did, because these, it's difficult to have these conversations in 15 minutes and try to, you know, come up with, you know. But I will, I will conclude my remarks with this. You talk about sort of people being able to stay in place. One of the, the goals that we set for the Belssover School came out of the fact that when South High One of the, the goals that we set for the Belt Hoover School uh, came out of the fact that when uh, South High was re uh, uh, redone and South High's, it's just magnificent. What I learned going there was any number of residents in the building were from Belt Hoover. And they went to Mount Washington because there was no place for them to stay in age and place in Belt Hoover. And I thought, what a crime to be there for generations, raise your families, you know, have your, your grandkids live there, all those kinds of things. But you don't have a place to stay in age. So that, that became the concept of the school is, we're calling it age and place housing. So that you can stay where you've been your entire life and just so you downsize, it's all right. You can stay there and have all, all the familiarities that you've had for your entire life for generations, uh, still there at your access and still be able to afford to stay there. Good stuff. Thank you. And thank members. Thank you. I didn't mean to take that much time.
Thank you, Councilman. And we're going to start with the way that we came in and it was, you were in second, I believe, correct? Yes, Councilman Coghill. So let me just also say we're joined by Councilman Coghill, Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Wilson. And Councilman Coghill, then Councilman Wilson, then Councilman.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be glad to go. Um, welcome Karen. Thank you for meeting with me yesterday. We had a really, really nice conversation. I care more about you as a person than I did, you know, as, as the technicalities of your job. I, I take for granted that the mayor has trust in you to do this job. I don't know all the specifics that you do. I know it's very
Councilman, please use your mic. Councilman, could you put your mic a little bit closer? Thank you.
I, I know, just listening to you and Councilman Kraus go back and forth, you know, you have many different aspects of your job. But, but I, I, I really like you as a person. I, I thank you for the visit. Um, you know, I read your book. Not all of it, some of it, you know, parts pertaining to, to Beachview. And, you know, after our conversation, and I, I will tell you, I was not one that supported, you know, having to interview everybody the mayor appoints. However, I, you know, I, I tend, I tend to enjoy it now just because you wouldn't have been in my office yesterday, probably. If I didn't, if we weren't having this meeting today, eventually you would have, I'm sure. So, so it's just a good way to get to know, you know, the, the, the people who, who we, we will be working with on a daily basis. And, you know, we've talked about the Art Commission and the Art Commission. I know you just staff them. You don't make the decisions there, but uh, like to see a little bit of that change in a way of, I don't want them holding up a war memorial, for instance. You know, um, I think they probably have more important things to do. But I will tell you what I can't took from yesterday more than anything, Karen, was, you know, in talking to you, I always considered what planning did was brick and mortar. You know, Oakland project, terminal down the strip district, things of that nature and what that means to the surrounding neighborhoods and, and that aspect. But in talking to you and reading your forethought here and, you know, learning a little more about you, I think you can be really useful in a couple of my neighborhoods, Beachview for one. And we talked about the diverse population that I have there and integrating. And I know you did work with the Heinz Endowment, uh, you know, on this specific matter. So, so it's great that you already have that knowledge. And I look to tap into you as to not brick and mortar, not any development that I have going on in the South Hills. Although we do welcome development to the southwest of the rivers. And I thank, you know, council president always championing that. And there are projects there for you on that level as well. I wouldn't say as much as the other parts of town, but, but, but really what I took from our meeting is that you can help me. Planning is not just all brick and mortar. Planning can be uh, kind of integrating these two communities. And, you know, I don't want to get into the remarks and, and the differences between the people like me who've lived their all their life and the Latino community that moved in. But yeah, there were some kind of eye raising things there and I think a lot of that has changed. I do. And that's what we were discussing, you know, before, before we sat down here. So, so I, I look forward to tapping into your resources like that. And I think that's, I think your heart is as much into that as it is planning the development process and what it might mean to a certain neighborhood. So, so you have any comments on that, um, you know, before I ask you the other thing?
Um, sure. Um, and thank you for your comments and for reading the book. It was a really one pleasure to do and we can update the book, uh, obviously with the, what has actually changed. So I'll, I'll definitely talk to the professor who actually pulled it together. So the Art Commission, um, that has been a topic, a condition from two council people so far. So, um, and actually it's been a conversation that our um, staff at the Public Art and Civic Design has been having. Um, it's come up in several conversations um, at the mayor's office even. And so we're talking about, you know, how do we um, ensure that the code around the Art Commission is clear? And that um, we are doing more outreach to council members about how we can work more closely about where we can agree upon um, language that would be sufficient for our processes that we have and the projects that you're doing. Um, the Public Art and Civic Design staff, um, they are, are, they archive like a hundred and forty pieces of art um, that the city owns. And as you said, they staff the Art Commission. So they have a lot of, of experience around these issues and will be more than happy to meet with you and others. We also have processes in the departments that we need to address as well. Um, I know that um, the Department of Public Works has a process that we have to go through the Art Commission um, that they're interested in changing some of the things. So we're definitely open to those conversations. So happy to have them with you.
Yeah, that's good. And, and I'm not saying there's not a place for the Art Commission. I mean, you know, if we're doing a forty foot mural, I think somebody else's eyes should be on that. Uh, it's the smaller things, you know, that I thought, I just thought, what's the Art Commission doing, looking at?
Streamlining, yeah, and looking
I know, I know Councilwoman Kell Smith has a new piece of art going in, but uh, Mount Washington. Oh, okay, right, that's right, that's So we'll, we'll deal with that later. Well, we think, whatever. Um, so, so that, um, that's great, you know. Um, I wholeheartedly support you. Uh, the other thing was, of course, and Councilwoman Gross knows very well about our forum.
Yes.
Which I think you paint, play an integral part in this. This is uh, planning in a way I think that, I don't think major cities have planned for something like this. And uh, we hope to bring it to fruition. And um, you'll certainly have to be a part of that because there's an education piece as well as a food policy piece in it, you know? And um, you know, that really is a citywide, I, I think of it as a citywide project, even though it's in my district. But um, yeah, I look forward to, I look forward to you reading my book.
Thank you for sharing it with me yesterday.
You're welcome, you're welcome. You have our master plan. It's not finished, but uh, it gives you a good idea.
Right.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And uh, Councilman Co, um, Wilson, I apologize, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Uh, well, I'll start off by saying thanks for my recent meeting. It was, it was nice meeting you and talking with you about some of your objectives already. And we probably covered most of those of that. There were some follow up questions I had. Before I get started, I just wanted to mention um, Councilman Kraus was going through, you know, all the different like amenities and investments. And he was touching on some of my areas. And, you know, because he mentioned stadiums and different developments. And so, um, you know, having lived on the north side of my life, I'm thinking there's a lot of vacant lands still. Um, which wasn't mentioned. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are on as we, you know, try to continue to grow the city. You know, what are some of um, ideas that you have, concerns um, as we move forward with that?
Um, so our neighborhood planner um, for the north side is S J, uh, Stephanie Joy Everett. And she's been working in Manchester. Um, and she's been working, and Manchester doesn't have that many vacancies, but they have vacant lots there. And I think the MCC has been doing a good job of using some of the, you know, financial tools to build some housing there. Um, as well, um, working on the plan in, um, wow, that neighborhood is always getting me right now with the, the, the sixty five, with sixty five divides. Um, Chateau, this, I can't, I'm sorry, I, I
It's a way, it's interesting.
It's an interesting area. And not quite vacant lots, but I know there's work going on there to have access to the rivers. Um, but I guess you're talking about more further north.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, we've used
Right.
Main, you know, parking lots that we've had. Uh, if you go from the Heinz plant to, you know, the first apartment development or there's, you know, there's a light, new line of life and there's some industry there. But um, you know, even across the river, when they were all parking lots, and now that we're seeing them being developed. And just curious on, you know, what you think we should be mindful of? Is there zoning changes that you foresee that you want to tackle?
Well, I mean, I know there's a riverfront plan that was done, I believe. Yeah, and I think we're discussing that at some point. Um, again, um, Andrea Levin Costas worked on that plan. Um, and access to the riverfront is actually an important aspect of life. And I'm, I'm from New York City and we had access to the, so all the, the Hudson River and the Manhattan River for ages. We have trails all around it. Um, here there are some barriers to the riverfront, which I know that the, the plan addresses. Um, and so I think that there's a Brit, the Brit, Sixteenth Street Bridge cuts through some of that work. Um, and looking at the community, the communities that touch that, those areas. So back to understanding how to do more like regional work with the communities there would be an important aspect of planning for that particular place. I know the Heinz, I know the Heinz, uh, the Heinz building, it seems like there's some manufacturing there as a
It, they turned into loss. So that falls, yeah, that kind of goes into my next question where I was um, or really the first question I had planned was just to talk about the neighborhood plans.
Okay.
Um, and so recently in um, uh, for Brighton Heights and Marshall Shadlin, um, in, in a previous budget, we budgeted eighty thousand. That wasn't enough. And so then we added seventy thousand more for this neighborhood plan. I want to know you know, what value you see in the neighborhood plans? And, you know, how they'll be implemented, uh, what you see for implementation? So it just doesn't like sit on a shelf for the rest of, the rest of eternity?
No, that, yes, that's a very good point. I think that's something that people are very nervous about. Um, we adopt plans now. I think that's, that's happened very recently. Um, having to adopt plans really does kick into an effect that is, issue they should be implemented as well. The staff um, at the Department of City Planning have been working with community groups to look at implementation. That is a recent development. Um, it didn't exist, not that there can be redevelopment authority, but I think there's been resources put into how to implement the plan. Obviously, there are so many pieces of it. I know I was on the Hill District, the Hill District Plan meeting and there were people from Domey on the call. There were people from all the different departments on the call. And so ensuring that it's interdepartmental um, approach to it, the R B B Development Authority, Housing Authority. So I think the implementation plans are key to the planning process. So that um, there's, there, that we understand that there's funding that's set aside to implement them. I think that has been an inequity, honestly, with a lot of neighborhoods that there's a planning, planning, planning. And those plans rarely get implemented. And recognizing the need for implementation, the City Planning Department has made sure that communities have implementation plans with them.
Yeah, it's interesting to see it play out with uh, the Oakland development where they're, they're in, in, you know, I think, and wrap up their planning process here, the neighborhood plan. And how much of the, the investment that Walnut Capital wants to make gets on those points and just, it's kind of bringing it. You know, it's kind of putting the issue right on the table to see how will, you know, um, you know, implement these plans that the neighborhood, that we've involved the neighborhood. And, and so it's just, um, so I was just curious on, on that. So thanks. Uh, the other thing was, are you um, planning on restructuring city planning at all?
I
Planning on restructuring.
I mean, I think that the, I think a lot of departments, including ours, goes through constant restructuring. So it would be natural that we would, yes, absolutely. I, I mean, we're thinking about it um, in terms of the forging P G H plan, the comprehensive plan. Um, we're thinking about it in light of COVID nineteen and what's needed as far as additional staff to address a lot of issues that, that we've seen, the inequities that we've seen come out of that. And so I do think that not that, you know, the staff there is pretty incredible. Um, I'm having one on ones with them. Um, now I've gotten through most of the staff. There's still a lot, but and we're following up, but they do incredible work. And so, but unfortunately, a lot of them are doing, you know, a lot more than I would want them to do. Um, they're, they're stretched pretty thin, like, like, like a lot of our departments are. Um, and so we've got to figure out, you know, how to share work. Um, we have openings that we're trying to figure out if we need to um, think differently about what those positions would actually do. And so, yes, I think that's the natural order of things. I believe in change. I believe that we evolve and I believe that, that happens at every single level. And, and to just the needs of the residents more, I mean, more, this is really about like, how do we restructure to address the needs of the residents in time now and for the future?
Any top priorities? The org chart comes up every uh, every budget season sometimes. And I just want to know any top priorities in terms of reorganization?
Um, I don't, I, I just think that we need staff in every single one of our divisions. I believe that um, I wouldn't put one division over another because they're all essential to the work that we do in the city. And so we've been really trying to think through, again, you know, the comp plan is important. Including, the comprehensive plan is very important to complete and that takes a lot of time and effort. Um, and it costs money to your point, um, not only just from uh, looking at consultants, but hiring staff to not only do the engagement and the outreach, but also to do the implementation. And so we really need to think very clearly about um, what that looks like. Um, you know, our, our zoning uh, Assistant Planner for zoning, um, I'm sorry, Assistant Director for zoning Cory Lehman um, and Andrew Dash, uh, Sarah Menhart, who's the Arts, the Public Art and Civic Design Manager. And I are talking about what do we need to look for as far as budgeting for the next five years? If we're going to be doing a comp plan, if we're going to be looking at the data that tells us how we are growing as a city or not. And we need to make sure that we have um, resources allocated for growth. We want growth and we want to plan for growth. That's, that's extremely essential. We want to plan for people to stay in place and to thrive. And that may require a restructuring. And we, and again, this is, this is my third week. And so I think by next month, we will be looking at what each division's doing. The mayor's office asked us to figure out like, what, what are you all doing? So that I can see what we're all doing now to make the proper adjustments. I'm, I'm not sure if I answered your question because it was a, it's, it's a very good question. And trying to actually get the resources to do that is going to be a challenge, but we'll have to figure that out.
The only other question I had was, do you um, envision uh, you know, while you are, while you're the director to do, to try and um, tackle uh, um, a complete zoning code overhaul?
I received a wonderfully written and planned out document from Cory Lehman um, addressing the planning amendments that he's interested in introducing and some of them do include basic code. So I would definitely have no problem talking with you about that with him. Um, and also addressing the code from a racial equity standpoint. I mean, he's very interested in looking at that and how we don't continue to harm residents in the city that have been segregated into areas um, by previous planning um, codes and laws that are enforced by federal, state and local government. So that's an important part of the, of an entire array of things that we're looking at in the zoning department, yes.
Well, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
I appreciate your time and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Yes, likewise. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Gross.
Madam President, thank you, uh, Director Abrams for being here, for being willing to serve with us and for our public. Um, and we also had a chance to talk and I'm really grateful for making, or making time for me as well. We all hear each other talk a lot, so we all know each other's kind of, you know, we hear a lot of each other's concerns from each other's districts. So, you know, every, you know, almost every day of our lives, we spend together in this room. It feels like um, sometimes the year it is every day. Uh, so I always like to add in my shtick, which these guys have all heard, which is that, you know, in District Seven, we have seen more upward price pressure than any other part of the city. Um, there's this dramatic increase in home values and home prices and in rent. Uh, we have had displacement. Uh, we are fighting for affordability every day just to, because we've lost our neighbors um, to price pressure. So there's uh, the zip code for Lawrenceville one five two oh one was in, I think it was Business Weekly uh, last year because it was a report nationwide on the highest price last year because it was a report nationwide on the highest price jumps of zip codes across the country. And the number one spot was in San Francisco and the number two zip code was in San Francisco. And the number three zip code was Lawrenceville on five two oh one. So we know, and I've represented the citizens of Lawrenceville, especially in their policy battles, you know, from creating the city's first community land trust to working on inclusionary zoning, to even advocating for the changes around parking requirements for housing that we council passed last year so that we relieved some of the requirements for the kind of tightest row house areas. Because that brings down price, right? So it really does save housing when you're talking about new construction, if you don't have to provide that parking. You save money. That's a whole other room of a house. So we continue to do that work, but I always acknowledge with my colleagues that we really have a city with two different housing markets. It's maybe some of the areas are starting to change, right? But that we've for so many years only had policies around blight and disinvestment and abandonment. But, and, and it's good and that's what we're here for, right? That's the rightful role of local government and with city planning and zoning and land use as a tool. But it's also okay for us to do the other side of the market when it's hyperinvestment and it's gentrification and it's displacement and crowding, right? So we, and I, I think it's rightful for us to moderate both ends of crazy market. We want to know that both ends are dysfunctional and not creating the city that we want to create, right? So we're here, I'm here to support, right, our, our citizens and their vision for their neighborhoods while balancing the scales as to the best with all of the tools that we can for equity and success for everybody. And so a lot of that does involve land use, not all. Some of it involves financing, which I was talking with Councilwoman Kraus. Like some of those questions are also going to be questions, I think, for the next interviewees. We're talking about a redevelopment agency and where financing can happen. But that we try to create these neighborhoods, I think especially that we are lucky in most of our city to have had neighborhoods that were walkable neighborhoods that had grocery stores, that had access to transit, that had access, you know, room for small businesses, close to shops, where you could get your daily needs in your fifteen-minute walking kind of city, right? And to the best that, that we can recover from bad zoning from the last, you know, fifty to a hundred years that stripped our neighborhoods away from their assets and really isolated some citizens away from their daily needs. I know that, you know, I think we have a lot of energy to do that. And that's part of our land use power. So I would be very interested in that. And that includes the kind of urban ag stuff that Councilwoman Kraus and Councilwoman Smith and some other council members have been working on. But not only, you know, we're also interested in supporting, a lot of us represent neighborhoods with main streets, traditional trailer car main streets where we have local small business and we want to make sure that we're not doing anything to make their lives more difficult in our land use and our zoning code. And sometimes we are. You know, a lot of that is not in your department. It would be in P L I. But there's still are ways, I think, that we could help make and protect affordable commercial space. And I've been asking now for a couple of years since we did a deep dive as, as a body, as a council and with our city departments on how to do residential affordability. We've learned a lot and I think it's a good time now to ask whether we can use a lot of those same tools for commercial affordability. Because otherwise you just end up with Chipotle, Starbucks and nuisance bars because they can pay high rent, right? And you don't end up with a dentist, a drugstore and a daycare. They need the lower rent in order to succeed, honestly, a lot of times. And they were at risk of, of displacing those neighborhood-serving businesses that really make daily life doable. And so it's always a keen interest of mine. And so I would look forward to working with your department there. But I wanted to, I know that you've done some deep dives on that and maybe, you know, you talked about it a little bit earlier, but if there's anything you wanted to add about how you see that kind of engagement happening around kind of what neighborhood visions are and what their assets currently are or what their deficits are, what their needs are. Because they're not all the same. And they don't have to be all the same. Right? And so I don't know if you wanted to have anything to add there.
So I, thank you for the questions and for the comments. I mean, these are very complex topics that I know that you've been very passionate about and others here and as well as community members and businesses, quite frankly. And so I look forward to working with you and other authorities, the R A and other entities as well on that. As far as engagement in community plans and visions, I do think that they are a very real asset. Oftentimes, the process by which we do them is as important as the planning. Because people feel like they actually have, people are investing in their time. And I think, understanding that people want to be heard, they want their voices to be heard. And oftentimes, the only place they can have that voice heard is in a plan. I don't have much to say about the composition of the plans, although I do sometimes want us to think about equity as the lens through which we do the plans as opposed to equity being a part of the plan. That makes any sense. And, and so, you know, understanding that communities, even if they look like they're monoliths, there's, there's such richness and diversity within the communities that they're in. You know, based upon ability and based upon age, we have young people who should be involved in planning. I definitely agree with, I definitely think that. And older residents, the seniors should be involved in planning. And they've seen a lot. They can teach us a lot about what happens potentially in the future and everyone in between. So I think these are assets for so many reasons. Being able to look into, try to look into the future as to what your, what's your community to look like is not very easy for a lot of people because they've never seen anything but what they've got. They've never been asked the question, what do you want your neighborhood to look like? When they ask, you ask the question, they don't know. And so, again, I think that they are valuable. I did exercises at the Urban Development Authority. I had these toolkits in neighborhoods and I did one with Councilwoman Kraus and Belsuver. I think two of them were in Belsuver. And it was a charade, a lot of vacant property that wanted to find out what the community wanted, you know, what they wanted to do with it and what the challenges were. But it was really about them getting to know who their councilperson was, who their city planner was, who at the Urban Development Authority can contact and tons of resources. Because some people didn't know who their councilperson was. So something very, that's something that we take for granted, obviously, sitting in this, in this, in the space. And so, again, we did do some of the work that was in the plan. But I think celebrating the fact that people actually understand where resources are and where to get them is so important as well.
Thank you for that. I do think that there's, I think that would, is a valuable role for City Planning Department to try to reach deeper than the usual characters. Because we, we see a lot of the same faces coming here who are the people who are activated already or are, it's their job to be activated. But if we're going to really have powerful change plans that have the power to change and, and improve people's lives and neighborhoods, it's, it's a harder job. It's a harder job. We have to be more proactive and, and use more resources and more skills and more staffing to go do that.
I agree with you, Councilwoman. Thank you very much.
She knows my response already. They both do. Is that it, Councilwoman? Good, good ending. Now it's my turn. Thank you. I'm actually going to be brief because I know we have Acting Director Norman waiting and Representative Sarah Anna Marado and Cal waiting for the appointment, the interviews for the U R A. So I'll just be real brief. I did have some, a brief conversation about repealing the Art Commission. So I just want you to know that that's, that's heavy on my mind, but I, I love the idea. I love the idea of having the Art Commission, but I think they need to understand that they're in a role where they're to offer some, some advice to the community, but I don't think the decision-making should be theirs on what the community has chosen to put up in their neighborhoods. So for me, I think when people overexert themselves or their, their influence, I think, then we need to reevaluate what we're doing there. Because I think that there's been times where people didn't put banners up because they weren't approved by their, although the community approved them, they weren't approved by the Art Commission in various neighborhoods. At least that's some of the feedback I'm getting. So, so just so you know, that's, that's a conversation I've already brought up to the administration that I'm, I'm considering. But I will work, definitely work with them and you on that as well. But when you talk about the community and the community-based organizations, I, I just have a lot, and we've already had the conversations. I'm not going to rehash it all. But I do want to say that when I talk about knowing what's going on in our side of town, I think the fact that we're looking to extend into Wilkinsburg shows that there's such a lack of commitment for Southwest Pittsburgh that you're, we're looking to extend into the East End even further because we don't have the desire or developers that want to come to our side of town. And so when you talk about inclusionary zoning and we talk about different things that are important to the East End, those aren't always the things that are important to our side of town. So I want to make sure that as we're moving forward, I, I know that the three, at least three of us are going to stick together. I'm pretty sure I can get other members to stand with us when it comes to our side of town and get, making sure we're getting, we're getting something a little bit different, some more incentives. And I think that's one of the biggest things we need is some incentives for development on our side of town. But we also need plans. And when I hear city planning with, a, a planning department with so many people, and I would be thrilled to expand, extend and, and help with city planning if there were two things. One, they respected the role of council and that they worked through the council members on things. I, I know recently we had a conversation, Councilwoman Gross worked extensively on, what was the study, Councilwoman, could you mention it?
It was what the, we are looking forward to a briefing from planning soon to council on identification of lots in the inventory that could be used for urban agriculture.
Yeah, and that was something you, you worked, really, you know, that was something you worked on. And so I would want to make sure that that respect is, is brought back to council. Because we don't like, because I, I get to a point where we force our way then and, and I don't think we need to do that. I think that, I think this administration has so far has been really willing to work with us. I think it's been a good relationship with, with both sides. We're all going through a transition, but, you know, so there's going to be bumps in the road. And, and so I think that's true, you know, we, I think Councilwoman Kalkin, I just mentioned this in another meeting today. There's always going to be bumps in the road and even when Mayor Padudu came into office, he was here for twenty years. There's still bumps in the road because once you get into that office, it's always different than what you're, the reality of what we all thought it was, right? And when you get into this office, it's different than what people think. So I'll just say, to me, that's one, it is, I want the respect for council. But the other thing is, I really would like to see some plans for this, for, for this neighborhoods. Individual neighborhood plans that are developed and drafted with the neighbors that live in those communities. Not somebody from the East End deciding what we should do in the West End and not somebody from the East End or, or from the North Side deciding what, what should happen in the South Hills. But that you're going to the neighbor, if you live in Elliot, you have a, you have a voice in Elliot. If you live in Ferrywood, you have a voice in Ferrywood. If you live in Sheridan, you have a voice in Sheridan. But if you live in Westwood, you're not going to tell Oakwood what to do, you know? So that kind of stuff, I want to make sure the residents of the neighborhoods are respected. Then I'm, I'm happy to work with you on increasing the, the staff, but I, I want to see some of that stuff first. I want to see that respect. One of the things I hope this administration does is that they collaborate a little bit more with their departments and making sure that when you're sending somebody into the community, you're not sending twenty people for one community meeting, that there's a person who can go into the community and they can speak for all departments. Because what I found, a lot of times when we would go to community meetings, we would be contradicting one another because nobody communicated with, they didn't know. And I would sit there sometimes thinking, yeah, if you think that's going to happen, good luck. But that's all, you know, so, I mean, but it was difficult, but that's what happens. So I hope that we get to, to that point where we're able to do that. So I'm not going to say anymore other than, we'll talk about the foundations later and your strengths. Could you tell me what you think your strengths are for this position? Because this is an interview. So I want to know, what do you think your strengths are and what you think, hope to bring differently to this position? That's, and then after that, we'll wrap it up and go to Director Norman.
So my strengths are, I'm a really systems thinker. I could see the connections between things that seem very disparate to people and sometimes obvious, but really looking at how systems work together. I think holistically about things. I am a collaborator. I like to get to yes. I like to figure out how to get to yes. It takes me forever, but I don't like to say no. I like to say yes.
I think we had that conversation too.
We did, and I completely agree with you because we can't, we are working on behalf of the residents of the city and we have to get to yes for their sakes, if, if nothing else. And so, and I think that the staff at the City Plan Department understands that and we do that all day. And that's a lot of work to do. And I'm not, I mean, I think with regard to collaboration, I mean, already working with Kim Lucas at DOMI, you know, trying to figure out how to split that, that responsibility. Went to a Zone Five meeting a couple of days ago and did some work with her. Your staff was in that meeting around, kind of get around the bridge. We've got a lot of challenges and opportunities ahead for the residents here. And so I'm looking forward to working collaboratively. And I think, you know, I just, I have grown to love living here. I'm a New Yorker, but I've been here, it's as long as I've been anywhere else other than New York City. I bought a house here a year ago and I'm dedicated to doing the work here.
And did you buy your house Southwest Pittsburgh?
I bought it close to Southwest Pittsburgh. It was in Hazelwood. I did look around.
Everything is close to Southwest Pittsburgh. That's one of our selling points, okay?
I'm like, right, I'm, I'm, I'm across a, a bridge, of course, but I'm, I'm not too far. But, I mean, and I
No, I, I, you didn't have to answer. I just want to say that I'm looking forward to working with you. We have a good relationship. I, I, you know, excited to, if there's something we can do to help excluding, increasing your, your staff, then please let us know. And then when we get to a place where we're comfortable, then I'm happy to have that conversation as well. And good luck. Your appointment, your confirmation will come up this Tuesday.
Thank you all for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
And then we're going to begin with, or I want you next, we want you next, Director Norm, Acting Director Heidi Norman.
Hello.
Hi, Director.
Let me redo it.
Let's have the clerk is going to read the.
Bill sixty-six, resolution appointing Heidi Norman as Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Acting Director Norman, I will give you a chance to introduce yourself to the public, say a few words, and then we'll go on to council members.
Oh, thank you. My name is Heidi Norman. I have been with the City of Pittsburgh since twenty seventeen, so for five years now. Prior to that, I was the Principal and Chief Service Officer for a startup technology company out of the Washington DC area. And then after that, I was Vice President of Customer Success for Polaris Healthcare Systems here, located here in Pittsburgh. Again, another technology startup. When I came to the city in twenty seventeen, I began work as the Assistant Director for Client Services within the Department of Innovation and Performance. I was promoted to Deputy Director at the beginning of twenty nineteen and then had the good fortune to become the Acting Director in November of twenty twenty. So I've actually been in the Acting Director position for, I guess, sixteen months now. And I'm looking forward to speaking with everyone on the council today. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. And we'll begin with, we ended with Councilwoman Gross. We're going to start with her this time. Councilwoman Gross.
Hi, Mike. There we go. It's hard to get these mics on and off. Welcome, Director. It's always a pleasure to see you. I will probably just say a few things. I'm supportive of your nomination and I encourage the, the mayor to, to keep you in this role. So I've been impressed with the work that you've done at IMP and I always recommend to everyone who has an interest to watch your annual budget hearings for IMP because they're so cogent and coherent and they communicate so much information succinctly and clearly. So I appreciate that. I want to give you the opportunity maybe to talk a little bit about the work. I want to give you the opportunity maybe to talk a little bit about um, the work that you've done already at IMP. Um, especially as you point out on your resume, the five-year plan, the modernization of infrastructure. Um, and feel free to point out um, in the here, I, where you've pointed out elsewhere, kind of how far we've have to come in rebuilding the actual physical infrastructure of um, our, our data systems.
Oh, well, thank you for your kind words. I really appreciate it. Um, so I, I'm happy to talk about um, some areas that have been of great focus and, you know, really none of this, you know, IT is, IT is an expensive um, proposition, right? And we are responsible for underpinning many of the services offered by all of the nineteen departments across the city. Um, but IT is expensive and it's resource intensive, right? Um, so we wouldn't have been able to accomplish any of the things I'm about to talk about without the support of both the mayor's office and city council. So for that, I'm very appreciative. Um, so first I'd like to talk a little bit about the underlying IT infrastructure for the city of Pittsburgh. Um, in the past few years, we have launched several initiatives to really bring all of that um, important um, technological infrastructure up to modern standards in order to support the many applications, um, endpoint devices and other systems that our operating departments desperately need in order to serve the city. That includes um, physical updates to many of our facilities, beginning with the city county building last year, um, where we completely rewired the entire building um, for all the city floors with new CAT six A internet wiring that should future proof um, the need to update that wiring again for about twenty years. We also removed many of what are called the wiring closets. They, they were all located in the restrooms, which um, if anyone knows anything about electricity and wiring and water, um, is probably not a good combination. So all of those were removed from the restrooms and each floor got a new wiring closet along with um, uh, wifi access points. So where it used to be, it's a very old building with very thick walls and uh, wifi access was highly intermittent on all of the floors. And now we have full coverage of wifi on all of the city floors. So that was a big project and we're super proud of it. Um, and now our plans are to move forward and to do the same types of upgrades with the remainder of the city's facilities um, across the entire, across all neighborhoods. That will um, bring together another important project that we are launching very soon, which is our new dark, least dark fiber network called NetPGH. Um, this will replace uh, the network that we have been running on, which is run by multiple vendors um, and is not really visible nor is it managed by the city today. Um, it will take us about two years to have that full network in place. Um, but that is going to put the future of a network and technology infrastructure in our hands and really help um, us to be able to support all of the great technology that we have coming down the pike in the future. Another, the final big thing on our IT infrastructure that happened last year, and it was really super exciting, was our initiative to move much of our servers, so the compute as well as the storage functions into the cloud. Um, previously, we, we had on, on premises data centers. We still have those data centers, but today they are much smaller. And the majority of our applications, our servers, so the compute as well as the storage is all in the cloud. So that's been a, really a tremendous leap forward for us and allows us to scale up or down as needed um, by the department's demands for additional storage and applications. Makes us much more agile from that perspective. We've also had a very large effort over the past couple of years, which continues to really harden um, our IT borders with regard to cybersecurity. Um, we have been hard at work um, with things like multi-factor authentication, hard drive encryption and monitoring of the city's network with sensors. So that's something that is of great interest um, across all government entities and that's something that we have um, really put a lot of focus and resources into and um, we will continue to do so.
Director, I'm glad you mentioned that. I'm going to jump in and ask something that I hadn't planned on asking, which is that when we're talking about cybersecurity, I feel that your skill sets and the skill sets you've built up in your department lend themselves to the work that we've been thinking up till now to be in the DOMI sphere of jurisdiction of right-of-way um, infrastructure. Especially as we move into the distributed antenna networks and especially as we move into 5G, as we move into advanced telecoms, near-field communications and they're on our property. And there's various levels of jurisdiction with the state of Pennsylvania maybe trying to preempt our jurisdiction, but now new federal funds and have you begun discussions about how this kind of your, the, these departmental jurisdictions, I feel like meet here when we're talking about cybersecurity?
Um, so that's a really good question. I think there are sort of two sides to that particular coin. One is um, the security of the physical infrastructure, right? Where um, you might have someone who is trying to interfere with, you know, 5G uh, radios or some of the antennas. And for the physical security for that, we coordinate um, through public safety for a lot of that. There's also the technical and sort of the, the hidden side of cybersecurity where people are trying to potentially infiltrate our network using electronic means. Um, and DOMI is uh, is responsible for the physical items that go into our rights of way. And uh, we do have conversations with them and coordinated with public safety as well as of course, the FBI and Homeland Security for all aspects of our security measures.
So for example, if we were to build out further um, trapped timed traffic signals and those kinds of things, you would all be collaborating on, between public safety, your department and DOMI on eh, making it, you know, uh, protecting it from hacking and protecting it from being an access point into our other systems.
Yes, absolutely. So any of, any smart traffic lights and things like that, that would um, be networked um, or have sensors that ultimately go uh, have, bring data into the network. All of that has to be secured, both physically and electronically um, through a variety of means.
Director, thank you. It's just another aspect that I hadn't even thought about that you already have, which is exactly what we want and the Director of Innovation and Performance. So thank you for uh, for being on top of it and for being um, such a strong director.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson and then Councilman Calkil, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so if you could just remind me, how, how long have you been Acting Director?
Uh, I've been Acting Director since November of twenty twenty.
Okay. And um, what are some uh, you know, what are some, some challenges that you see? I know you kind of went over, you know, everything you've been doing and what the department's been doing. But in terms of uh, you know, working in local government, eh, you know, and its capacity, uh, wha- what, what challenges do you see that we really need to work on and invest in that we're not investing in?
Oh, gosh, that's a really good question. Um, well, I think from an IT perspective, we really are investing in the right things. Um, you know, I, I try to be very focused uh, in when we put, pull together our budgets um, in terms of time, money and people, um, to make sure that we are really focused on um, spending those resources in a way that brings the most value to the city. Um, where I think we um, should be and honestly will be um, expending more of our time and energy in overcoming challenges is around things like data governance, um, open data, data privacy. So all of that work is very important. Um, I also believe that we will be um, investing more time and energy and resources into operational excellence and performance improvement, expanding upon a number of the performance programs that we have started over the past few years. Um, so those are two areas that I'm really looking forward to tackling with my team and um, in collaboration with all of the other directors and chiefs.
Okay. In terms of data security, is there a local, you know, um, ordinance that we have that we have to maintain a certain level of security? Or are we um, you know, are we under some federal law? Um, you know, in terms of what, you know, what level of security we're supposed to have?
Yeah, so that goes back to cybersecurity more generally, um, because data, data is a part of that, right? And we work very closely with um, FBI, Homeland Security and CSAT to ensure that uh, all of our um, systems are secure to the level that um, they really should be. We perform ongoing assessments and mitigation efforts, uh, risk assessments and um, really try to take steps um, to make sure that we are applying the very best practices that um, that are available to us from our colleagues in those other departments. There are um, many, many things that I think governments can do generally. Um, and I'm happy to say that Pittsburgh uh, is really one of the cities that's on top of this. We've been paying close attention. We have a staff and a team, a cybersecurity team that is dedicated to this and um, that, and they've actually been doing a great job. So I'm really ha- I'm really pleased with the work they're doing. The thing that's scary about cybersecurity is the evil baddies, as I call them, they only have to be right once. We have to be right 100% of the time. And that's a really tough situation to be in. So um, that's where um, you know, our Chief Information Security Officer Sylvia Harris has been doing a terrific job in staying in close touch with all of our colleagues and participating in ongoing conversations with those at the federal level as well as those at the local and regional level. And making sure that we are doing everything we know how to do to ensure the safety and the security of all of our data and other information technology systems.
Um, since I don't work in the information and technology world, it's like, you know, so hard for the layperson, I think, to understand like how this check is being made. So I'm going to try and relate it to something that maybe I can understand. Um, if there's, you know, so we're going to uh, have a website soon or a dashboard that shows you uh, the bridge, um, you know, about the bridges and our infrastructure in the city of Pittsburgh and status, funding, a lot of different a lot, a lot of different measures being taken, um, you know, and, and talked about, about what will be on that website. But is there something similar uh, that we should have for uh, data security to ensure that we're being, like, we're up to spec on it? Is this something that is like a monthly meeting that the administration has, has with? Like who's in control of, I mean, ultimately you're in control or the, the, you said, mentioned Sylvia Harris is in control of making sure that all these boxes are checked? I guess I'm just wondering, how do we know um, that it is being checked?
So um, so Sylvia Harris is the Chief Information Security Officer and she works with me in Innovation and Performance. We also have um, uh, committees um, that are made up of various um, directors uh, across the, the city who check in on cybersecurity. Um, we are happy to provide um, a briefing to city council on cybersecurity. Um, and, and the efforts that we have gone to, to make sure that the city and its data and information systems are safe. Um, I don't think that we're going to be publishing anything in a dashboard that shows the public exactly what it is that we're doing. Um, that would not be best practice. But we are happy to share that information um, with city council as requested.
Okay, yeah. Once again, I, I don't, you know, obviously don't want to uh, do something that puts us at risk, but um, just curious, you know, if it's, if it's like a car inspection where everything's kind of checked. Um, so yeah, it'd be great to understand that more and if there's something internal that we can see quarterly or periodically that would ensure that we're um, doing everything we can. So the um, you know, the other question I have was uh, with everyone working from home or the, or, uh, you know, certain offices and apartments that have work from home options. Um, and also people that work in the office. Um, or is everyone working on a, on a city computer? And if not, what are we doing to, to make sure that they are, uh, that they have the best option, the best, you know, available technology to, to, to um, to uh, you know, to use um, our device and not their own personal device?
So we have a technology refresh program. Um, in the past year alone, we uh, updated and replaced over six hundred and fifty devices um, for our city staff. Um, city staff generally at this point are, all get uh, new devices every four years to make sure that those devices are fully operational and are um, in good ma- maintained and working order. Um, everyone that works for the city who needs a device ought to have the device they need in order to do their job. We work with departmental liaisons, which means we have a liaison in every department. And they are able to order um, or request replacements for any devices for their staff that are needed. Does that answer the question?
Wait, I heard the number six fifty, but we, I know we have wait, how many uh, no, well, there's a mix of union employees. So, yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, specifically just to for to answer that question more fully, do we, you know, do you have um, you know, maybe it's, maybe, maybe it's a, a number that you probably can't produce right now, but yeah, I, I am interested in, in um, you know, the the issues that, that occur that people may not be using a city-owned device and just, you know, everything we're doing to solve that, because I just um, you know, I just know that through meetings that I have, you know, people um, you know, have had issues with city-owned device, trying to work with it. And I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to make sure that they don't have to use their personal device.
I'd appreciate hearing more about that. And specific, I'd appreciate hearing more about the specifics of what you're thinking of. Um, perhaps offline and we can address those issues directly.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman and Councilman Calkil.
You, um, my colleagues asked all the questions I was going to ask, Director.
Yeah.
So uh, no, I just really wanted to say you'll have my su- full support and quite simply put, when you were, I think, appointed Deputy Director, I think I called you your first week on the job over a very sensitive matter and I really appreciate how you addressed that and you got back to me promptly. And for me, with the department heads, that's the most important aspect is to what I look for out of a department head. So you have my full support. I don't have any questions pertaining to the job.
Thank you, Councilman. And it's my turn and, and I just, I'll just say briefly, Director, I, I've interacted with you just a few times, but I um, talked to some of your employees and they speak very highly of you. And so I, I think that went a long way with me. But um, I, I do want to ask a few questions. You mentioned the cybersecurity and briefing council and you're meeting with directors. Is there anybody from city council that you meet with um, in that regard? Is there some, is there a task force? Is it a commission, committee? What is it exactly?
Um, so uh, there is um, a committee um, that works on uh, security and cybersecurity policies and um, preparedness. Uh, and included in that group is Councilwoman Strasburger as the chair of the. Uh, Committee for Innovation and Performance.
And is anyone from our clerk's office included?
Um, not from our clerk's office on cybersecurity.
I would just suggest that you also meet with our clerk's office because they do a lot to keep this room going. They work with your team every day. Or every week, I should say, um for our meetings and for making sure the council members have all the things that they need, so I would. I would request that you also include our clerk's office in those conversations. And and if if need be, then I can, you know, we can legislate a task force or something, but I would just like, hopefully. I would hope that you'd re- respect our request to include our clerk's office in that.
Thank you for for letting me know.
Thank you, and then um, security cameras. Um, I know that we had an issue with those. Because uh Public Safety was saying we couldn't handle any additional security cameras. Could you talk to me a little bit about that and where we are with that?
Um, so Public Safety is um responsible for the Public Safety Camera Program. Um, we are uh, Director Schmidt and I. Are going to be in discussions um in March to determine how they would like to move forward with that with that program. And so that we can understand what it is that they need and what their plans are for expansion. Um, and the need for new cameras in those locations.
And then um. I know that you work with an amazing team upstairs. They do amazing work for us. I've always had like a great response. I think most members have had a great response from the department. Whenever we need anything, they're so quick to respond. A lot of them ca- have been here for a long time, and I remember when we were interviewing for the last director. Um, I think there were some concerns that there were people there that could have been the director or served as the director's position and they were overlooked. And I I don't wanna see that happen again, so if you tell me how, I've not heard one negative thing uh from them, I just want you to know. Um, cuz otherwise I'd be grilling you about it, but they uh, I wonder how you're gonna make them feel part of the team. Um, if you're already doing that, you've been there for a while, so I'm assuming you've probably already have done some of this work, but how do you? Uh, make value or make the current employees feel valued um that are there, like that have done a lot. I know that they. Pretty much trained the last director um in the department. So could you talk a little bit about that? The current employees and how you're working with them?
How I work with my employees?
Yeah.
In the apartment, sure. Um, and how I show them appreciation? Well, first of all, I do say thank you cuz they do do a great job. Um, I'm really proud to work with my team. We also have a lot of fun. We have um quarterly meetings. And we have various awards that we give out for all kinds of service and great things that they do. Um, I do think it's really important that when I receive. Um, an email or a phone call from someone um offering kudos to a member of my team that I recognize them. And you know, and and tell them that their work really matters. I mean, their work enables other people to serve our community better, right? And I'm really happy to say I actually started off today in exactly that way. I received just a wonderful email. Um, from Director, uh Acting Director Hornstein over in Public Works. About some members of our team that have really helped him out with a with a critical dashboard that he he and his team rely on. And that just makes my week when I get things like that, so. Um, you know, I have to say I'm enormously proud of the hard work that my team does. And um I just, I can't say enough good things about them. Um, they really um take their jobs very seriously. They are true public and civil servants. And um and I'm I'm thrilled that I have the opportunity to be able to work with them and to help lead them.
That's good to hear and and I, they must feel valued because previously I did hear, you know, some concerns and and I haven't heard any. Uh, from them currently, from current employees, I should say. Um, but that's it for Director. I I'm just gonna wait until I hear your response uh regarding the um clerk's office. Being included in in your bre- in your meetings um for cybersecurity. And then um if I'm comfortable with that, I'll put this appointment on the agenda for next Tuesday for confirmation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you so much, Director. Have a good day. And now we'll go on to U R A um appointments and we have Kyle, you wanna come up? And Representative State Representative Sarah Anna Morado and Madam Clerk.
Bill one eighteen, Resolution Informant City Council of the Appointment of Cal Chinta Palawa.
Chintalopoly.
Chintalopoly.
A member of the U, the Urban Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire December second, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, and the other uh, read both, yeah, for U R A.
Bill one nineteen, Resolution Informant City Council of the Appointment of State Representative Sarah Endo Morado. To serve as a member of the U R A for a term to expire December second, twenty twenty-six.
You really do need a Smith on this board, is all I'm gonna say. But um, we're gonna begin with uh respectfully with uh Representative Anna Morado. Uh, if you wanna say a few words, Representative, and then we're gonna let Kyle say a few words and we'll turn it over to members for questions.
I'm sure. Good afternoon, folks. Thank you so much for having me. Um, my name is Sarah Annamorato. I represent the twenty-first State House District, um which ne- means nothing to most people. Uh, but if you're looking at it in terms of city neighborhoods, it currently includes Morningside, Stanton Heights. Um, Tenth Ward in Lawrenceville, um Bloomfield and Friendship. Um. I've had the honor of serving in this position for almost four years. Um, time has really flown by, given that the majority of my term has been spent during a global pandemic. Um, I am a lifelong resident of the Pittsburgh area. I grew up in Ross Township and in Millville. Um, and then went to the University of Pittsburgh where I studied business and then after graduating from Pitt. I moved to Lawrenceville um because it was really inexpensive at the time. Um, and that was in two thousand and nine and um I'm really grateful that I moved there and. Because that was the neighborhood that showed me what it meant to be a neighbor. Um, I remember going to my first block watch meetings with Lawrenceville United and meeting a group of. Uh, engaged neighbors who were working on uh Leslie Park Pool Planning. Um, and if you've been over to see uh Leslie Park Pool recently, it looks the same as it did. Um, back in two thousand and nine when I moved moved here. Um, but it was the place that I really, I really felt home. And um it was, you know, that experience in the neighborhood that really inspired my involvement in the community. But also encouraged me to go into the nonprofit sector um where I worked with an organization. Um, called G Tech Strategies, which is now um called Grounded, so. Um, I've walked many of the streets in the North Side doing vacant land assessments. Um, we worked a lot in the South Pittsburgh neighborhoods to um help resident-driven.
Someone.
Vacant land projects um over the years and then I went out and was consulting with um government agencies. And nonprofits on communications policy and community outreach initiatives before I ran for office. Um, and now um I have been serving in this role, like I said, for years. Um, and really what we've tried to do is bring that spirit of community engagement to our district office operations. So we really try to um be proactive in our outreach to um to citizens um that we represent. And we really try to bring their voice to Harrisburg when we are designing legislation. Um, so with that, I um just wanna put that out there and I look forward to hearing what your questions are.
Thank you, Director. We'll hope you say that after we're done questioning, or I'm sorry, Representative.
Sure, uh, my name's Kyle Chintalopoly. I currently serve um in the mayor's administration as the Chief Economic Development Officer. I'm a native of Western PA, grew up in Erie, Pennsylvania. Um, ended up studying architecture at Penn State um and then worked in Erie for a general contractor for a time um for about six years. Before moving to Pittsburgh um and pursuing a degree in public policy with a focus in economic development. Um, from there, spent seven years in various roles in city government, both the U R A and the city of Pittsburgh. Um, the last three years I was with the Pittsburgh Regional Alliance, um which is the affiliate of the Allegheny Conference focused on economic development. For the ten counties in Southwest PA. Um, I missed you all so much. I missed city government so much. Um, and and jumped at the opportunity uh when when the team uh and and the Gini administration, you know. Called me to see if I'd be interested in coming on board, um so I couldn't be more excited um about getting to do, you know, this economic development work every day. I would echo a lot of the comments that um Director Designate uh Karen Abrams said in terms of, you know, how we need to approach this work with balance. With consideration, with community involvement, um and really, you know, plan for success, right? Plan for that growth so that we're doing it in ways that um incentivize um, you know, activity in neighborhoods that haven't seen it, do that in an inclusive way. And then to councilperson or councilmember Gross's uh comments, you know, how we're actually managing that, and I know Representative Anna Morado feels that in her district as well. So that we aren't um just doing, you know, what has typically been and how we sort of incentivize these developments and and these investments to come in. Really socializing that risk and privatizing the return, but what are the public benefits that we're able to secure? So that we're building a Pittsburgh that we want, a Pittsburgh that's for all and one that we're proud of, so um really thank you for the opportunity to talk today. And I'm excited about the appointment to the authority board.
Thank you so much, and I just wanna say that you're one of the nicest people I've ever worked with in this building. Yeah, I'm still gonna be hard on you, but anyway, just kidding. Uh, Councilman Kalkil.
Thank you. Um, and Kyle, I'm gonna call you Kyle.
That's fine, yeah, please, please call me Kyle. Chintalopoly.
Chintalopoly. I've got Anna Morado down, I think, by this time, but uh, you know, both beautiful names. I love names with vowels on the end. I think they're beautiful, so. So if I if I could, um Representative Anna Morado, I just wanna start off by saying, we have a. Mutual friend in the way of the Police Chief of the Housing Authority, Mike Vogel. Do you know Mike, right? So so I just wanted to um tell you, last time I saw you was down was down at the Building Trades, which um I was glad to see you there. I know, um, you know, they. They they recognize and they love to have your support as well as I'm sure you with them as well. Um, but Mike is an old friend of mine. We go way, way back, so. So we saw each other, you know, gave each other a brief hello, brief hug, which was very nice. We don't run into each other that much, um. But I wanna tell you, two hours later, I'm at home, I'm on the phone with Mike, my friend, you know, and you beep in on his line. And you say, wait, I just, I guess you were with him earlier in the day and you said you had a COVID scare and I was like, no, no, I only see her once a year. So I was kinda thrown into that COVID scare myself. I I don't know if you ever did contract or not, but I didn't wanna know. I was just like, it's fine. I was fine, though. I didn't get sick, so. Yeah, so, so no, you know, I just really wanted to um say to the vote to you, this to me is the most important board we have. It's a five-member board, I believe.
It's five members.
Five members, um the amount of cash that we've infused into, you know, and the responsibilities from the. From the Affordable Housing Care, um, you know, I think there's great responsibilities there, um whether it's talking about redoing avenues of hope. Or, you know, um, projects like our place that I have in my area, but I do echo our council president and, um, you know. Councilman Bruce Kraus is uh sentiments that, yes, we want you southwest of the rivers in so many capacities. You know, whether it's develop, whether it's the main street or um.
Councilman Kraus is behind you.
I felt his presence.
He's supporting you, your comments.
Oh, that's okay. Let's just stop everything.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman, Councilman Kalkil.
So, so no, I just really wanted to emphasize that as well. You know, there are many, many ways, and I don't have big developments. We're not Carson Street. We're not Oakland, you know, in in my districts, but you know, I feel that we need the attention of the U R A in so many ways. There are a few. U R A, U R A-owned properties, um and and Representative Anna Morado, I I heard you mention you did a little bit of work south of the rivers and. I'm curious is to see, you know, what capacity or what neighborhoods that was and um how you envision like coming into southwest of the rivers. And, you know, being viable to us in the ways that we need you there. Um, different, different problems, different issues for me in District Four. As it is for Reverend Burgess and nine, and and they're completely different, but at the same time, I feel we can really use the resources of the U R A. In development and business and housing, you name it, you know, you got, and and that's the other thing about this board. You know, you're, it's such a vast ver- variety, variety of different things that you're dealing with and pots of money. So um, so we just look forward to getting our fair share and I'll let you comment, either one of you on in any which way. Thanks.
I I can't look representative. I don't know if you wanna go first or you want me to go first.
Go right ahead, Kyle.
Okay, um, yeah, Councilman, I would agree with you. Um, there's different characteristics and different urban fabric, right, in the neighborhood. So the scale of the intervention isn't going to be the same, but that doesn't mean that it isn't any less important, right? So how we do that, the work that we do, you know, some of it's just. And Representative Kraus will appreciate this from, you know, what Southside Local Development Corporation had done in terms of just main street work, right? How you get in there, work with those businesses, get them, you know, there so that they are supporting, you know, the the neighborhoods and and the communities. And certainly in a neighborhood like Beachy where I lived for seven years.
You did.
Yeah, yeah, I lived on Orangewood. Um, yeah, just moved a couple of years ago, but um, so I'm very familiar, you know.
You're approved.
Very familiar with that, though, you know, not more recently in terms of certainly the housing pressures that people are feeling on the prices there, right? That that wasn't the case when when I initially moved there. Um, but it's a great community and, you know, I'm excited to see the investments that are happening on Broadway. And, you know, certainly the way that you are, I can be supportive of that, supportive of Bell's Hoover School, and I'm excited tomorrow to learn more about that project. Councilum Member Kraus, even though we had a chance to talk about it the other day, I'm excited to sort of see the renderings and the vision for what it can be. And certainly, um, you know, the council president, um, we talked briefly, you know, a number of projects that the Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation's done. And shared in another neighborhoods there. It's the scale of the intervention is different, right? But it's no less important, so we have to be thoughtful in the way that we approach that to ensure that there's. A meaningful sort of mass, right, that then is able to really both support the residents that are there, the investments that they've made. And then attract more families and and residents to to come in and take advantage of everything these communities have to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Kalkil.
Yes, Representative wants to reply. I'm done.
Sure, um, I have found that my time in office, my greatest asset are my two ears. Um, so I really do value listening to the people who are impacted by the decisions that I make in my role. And um you referenced uh Chief Vogel at the Allegheny County Housing Authority Police. Um, soon after being sworn in, uh, the county executive appointed me for to the Allegheny County Housing Authority Board. Um, and while housing and housing justice is a passion of mine, um I didn't know a lot of about HUD. Um, and specifically those regulations, um but being able to have um, to be able to sit down with the team there. Listen to what's going on um in the times before COVID, going to um the different housing authority properties. And listening to the residents on what they had to say, um and what their experience had been. Um, was a way that got me acquainted with what was going on, and I feel the same with the U R A Board. Um, it's not only listening to the people who make that uh run day in and day out, but also. Um, folks like yourself and, you know, any residents or stakeholders that you think would be important to listen to. Um, I'm always available to to sit and listen, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate what you said about economic development, right? Economic development doesn't need to just be about a giant. Multi-million dollar project. It's about our main streets. It's about preserving affordability on those main streets. It's about protecting our legacy businesses and what makes our communities vibrant and what makes people want to be there, live there, play, worship. Um, and call uh those neighborhoods home.
Great, well, thank you. I, you know, I believe that both of you are gonna be really good assets for the U R A. Uh, you'll both have my full support, I will tell you. Um, and the U R A is very active in certain avenues, which I look forward to carrying that conversation on. When the time is appropriate and certain things, but um, yeah, so so thank you both. I appreciate you being here. Um, you know, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and Councilman Wilson, then Councilman Kraus.
All right, well, thank you uh for both, um, you know, being here today and. You know, look forward to working with you both so much that I've already. Have a scheduled meeting with a community group, so I appreciate um both of of your um, your time and your willingness to.
to engage like that. I don't really have any questions. I mean, I really want to, you know, just continue to work, you know, in terms of that way, just kind of get down to to the issues that may arise in the neighborhood within development. I guess I just want to hear from you all in terms of what you're, you know, what you looking forward to accomplish or what you're looking forward to be a part of in terms of being on the U R A Board.
Um, I guess I'll answer it in two ways. You know, one, I've worked there twice now, right? So when I first was in Pittsburgh and got done with graduate school, I was in the Housing Department there and served as a project manager before coming over to work in the mayor's office the first time. And then I went back as as the chief strategy officer where we started working on the organizational strategic plan. I mentioned both of those instances just to say that as an organization, you know, for some of the reasons that that Councilmember Cog Hill mentioned in terms of the impact, right, that the that the organization can have, and ideally in a good way, it has a sordid history, to be sure. You know, that that we're all very aware of in the way that we approach the work, but it's an organization that's important to me, to be completely honest. It's when I was, you know, growing up in Erie, it's a Rust Belt town, you you deal with a lot of the same issues. When I moved back home after graduating college and was working, you know, you see those things, right? The shuttered mills and the neighborhoods that that don't look the same way as you remember them as, you know, a child, et cetera. That's what really made me want to get involved in public policy broadly and economic development specifically. And at the time, when you were looking around, there were very few places where you started to hear about things happening, at least within our region, right? Pittsburgh was one of them. This was 12 years ago. And and the U R A was, you know, when you kind of looked under the hood behind so much of that work. So that's a reason, you know, something that I'm looking forward to, being able to be part of the organization again, obviously in a different sort of capacity. You know, more broadly, you know, I would say, obviously, you know, as it turns to, again, echo some of what Councilmember Cog Hill said, and then the ability to kind of drive the, you know, an agenda forward when we talk about what an equitable Pittsburgh looks like, you know, and equitable development broadly. And how do we ensure, you know, there's real access to jobs and business opportunities in these industries that are emerging in Pittsburgh that people don't always feel or don't always see themselves in, right? Increased housing opportunities, a lot of that came up, you know, during the conversation with Director Designate Abrams, that are safe, accessible, affordable to residents at every income level. And then certainly the new investments, you know, to what we've been talking about, you know, into our historically disadvantaged small businesses, the main streets in those supporting those entrepreneurs. The U R A sits at the nexus of a lot of that work. So I'm excited to work on that. But to echo Representative Inomorado's point, we have listening that we need to do, right? The transition teams are out there, they're hearing things. So as we think about some of the particulars of that, you know, we can't answer that today for you, Councilmember, but, you know, those are the sort of broad strokes and what I'm excited about and why I think this is an important sort of position that, you know, I'm honored and humbled to to be asked to serve.
Representative, if you had any, I'd like to hear from from you as well.
Sure. So at the state level, I sit on the House Urban Affairs Committee, which primarily deals with housing issues. So a lot of the policy that we draft is related to housing justice and the creation of more affordable housing, tenants' rights and the like. One of the things that we have at the state level is called Fair Funding. That's run through PHFA. And it's that pot of money and the flexibility associated with it that has allowed for really amazing things to happen back in our community, like the creation of the Community Land Trust, which is now the City of Bridges Community Land Trust. And I think when we think about what I'm most excited about with the U R A is the new Housing Opportunity Fund. Because as we have goals set with the creation of that fund and a board that oversees it, it's going to be that those monies that allow us to do new and innovative things to address the housing issues that are unique to each neighborhood in in the city of Pittsburgh. So I'm really curious to see what ideas and applications run through that that fund and how we use it to do good work and help communities do, do the things that matter to them.
Well, great. And, you know, I just want to say thank you both for sitting through the other interviews. I feel, you know, I always feel bad about that.
But, um. It's 4:30. We're all getting a little punchy, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I look forward to to working with both of you and seeing what you all can accomplish on on the U R A Board. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman.
My turn. Thank you. First, let me thank you both for your willingness to serve and to go through these interviews. I I think for this alone, I wouldn't want to do it. And I've actually taken myself off more boards than I want than I put myself on or want to be on. But I do have, as you know, Kyle, a lot of concerns about West Pittsburgh. And I hear the comments for South Pittsburgh. And so we'll say we're not synonymous with South Pittsburgh. We have our own independent views and and things we'd like to see. We're 17 neighborhoods and everyone, they're all so different and independent of their own, of my own district. So on their own, they all want something different. Westwood and Banksville, they're begging for, you know, big, big name developments that are are names that you've heard of and is it in other parts of my district, they're begging for independent, small businesses. So it just depends where you are and what they're begging for and and what they'd like to see. And honestly, one of the things I keep hearing us talking about is stabilizing and making sure we're investing in neighborhoods that have not been invested in. But part of the reason they've not been invested is because we're doing exactly what we're doing, what we've done, what we're doing now is what we have done over the years is we disinvest in neighborhoods that are stable. And so instead of making sure we're maintaining stability, we always let a neighborhood fall apart, then build it back up, fall apart, and then put, build it back. And then people were pushed out and moved into a different neighborhood. By that point, they've already left their neighborhood or have been pushed out. And I just wish that we would get the idea that maybe a little bit of investment here and there makes it can go a long way. And so that's, but one of my concerns has been with this board, and I've made it very clear that I wanted somebody southwest of the river on the on this board. There is this entire board is made up of people from the East End. And that, and you wonder why we're expanding the East End and looking into Wilkinsburg, but yet we're doing very little southwest of the river and very, honestly, not that much in the North either. But we're doing a ton in the East and the ton in the Hill District and, you know, Central. And I think that when you look at the correlation of the board and how that's comprised and and where the development is, it's no surprise. So I've talked to the administration about restructuring the board and doing different things, and I feel confident that they, you know, would like to work with us on that and getting people on here. But in the meantime, my biggest thing is I take people for tours. I show you my district, ask you what you'll, you know, that you'll take a little bit of time to get to know our our area. I think a lot of people meet people. They think they're the voice for our area, and they have no clue because they're from the East End. You know, what people really want. So, I mean, I came from the East End, so it's nothing about the East End. I love the East End. I was born and raised on Fifth Avenue. So am I up until two years ago, my family lived there. But before that, they were from Wally Avenue in the Hill. So I value that area and I value, but I'm thankful they're all getting development. But that doesn't mean we don't need some investment on our side of town. So I think that when I hear everybody has like an idea of what development should be, it kind of concerns me because what you think development should be is what you're basing off of what you see and what you live. And so for our, I just want to say for our side of town, it may be very different. For Southwest Pittsburgh, it may be very different than what it is. And maybe different from the West and the South. This is in the South, they may have differences. So I just ask that you, I'm going to schedule a tour and hope that you'll come with me and join me on a tour. I'll take you out and you have a good time. But I also, I just can't help but notice that a lot of the people talking about change and doing different things. A lot of the people that we interviewed today are from the previous administration, Paduto administration. So I'm wondering how we see things differently, if there's anything different that you would do from, or that you would bring to the table that you couldn't or didn't do the last time. Kyle, I'm going to ask you that because Representative Inomorado obviously didn't didn't work for him.
Yeah, I'm going to comment on your first part. Because, I mean, you know this, Madam President, I'm happy to.
Put you on the spot.
No, no, no. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to tour your neighborhood, you know, at any point. You know that.
Party in the West End, okay?
And I apologize for for no longer living in Beachview and being south of the river. Yeah, we'll talk, we can talk about that more some other time. But, I mean, I think, you know, I don't know if there's a direct answer, you know, to your question as much as, you know, I think we're we're at a point, right, where where we do need to engage, you know, at a level differently. And that, to my comment earlier, like the type of of intervention and the scale of intervention and to even just what you were saying in Banksville, right, is going to be different than it is in Sheridan, right? Like the the Main Street, the Commercial District in Banksville is box retail on a vehicular artery that residents use regularly, right? And in Sheridan, you have more of a Main Street kind of feel. So I think those things are different. But I do think where we are, there's an, there's, to what Councilmember or Councilmember Kraus was saying earlier in Director Abrams interview, this is an important and impivotal time for the city right now, right? And that's what drew me back, right? In addition to, you know, the vision that Mayor Gani laid forth, some folks I know there that I was excited to work with, Karen included.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was about that, right? And and the ability to kind of move those things first because I think we all realize sort of where where we're at right now and in certain degrees, how, I don't want to say precarious, right? But, you know, it's it's touch and goes, it relates to COVID and and what it can mean and sort of how we shape this going forward. There's a level of import that, you know, gets me excited about the work. And certainly, I think, brings a level of soberness in the way that we approach it. So I know that's not a direct answer to your question, but, you know, that is what drew me back. And, you know, the the vision that's laid forth and how we kind of balance these things moving forward is what's exciting to me.
And I'm looking forward to working with you. I just, I just want to make sure as going forward that, you know, you remember you're there to serve the people, not to serve an administration or a council. We're there, or, you know, we're there to serve the people. And I think that different people have different opinions, and whether we agree with them or not, we represent them. And so like in Mount Washington, they want, there's a developer that came, he wants to develop finally the pit on Grandview. And, I mean, they've been waiting decades for that. I mean, long before I was elected. And he wants to put all upscale housing. Well, I think, you know, it depends what the community says. But he may not, he may want that, and that may be what they want. And that's what they want. That's what I want them to have. But I also don't want us to forget that there's behind Grandview Avenue, there's a lot of poverty. And so I want to make sure that we're addressing the needs behind Grandview Avenue as much as we are on Grandview Avenue too. So just in that neighborhood alone, there's just difference, you know, Councilman Cog Hill. You have a lot of relationships, and you represent that area too. So could you just tell me what you think you'll bring to the table on on this? I'll start with Representative Inomorado.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What do you think that you'll be able to bring to the Board that will be beneficial to the city? Obviously, you're good. I want you to answer for the public, though.
Sure. So I think, you know, since I've taken office, housing has been our primary focus. And, you know, I've been involved with the county and the Housing Authority Board. I also attend biweekly meetings as part of the National League of Cities, the Eviction Prevention Cohort. Our office does actively participate in that discussion around creating a more safe, stable environment for our tenants in Pittsburgh, because we know that, you know, homeownership is great and something we should have encouraged people to aspire to. But also, long-term renters are an asset to our communities as well. So we do need to think about stabilization in that that manner. What I bring to the U R A Board is my connections to the State House. I've been able to work with Mayor Gani as a colleague. And we've worked on joint legislation, like enabling legislation that would allow for the city of Pittsburgh to write their own long-term owner occupied program, much like one that Philadelphia has. So that connection to the state insofar as resources, as well as drafting legislation and trying to push that forward to enable, not to impose upon the city a set of rules, but to unlock legislative tools that you could use in different parts of the city, depending on what the need is of that neighborhood. And that's something that, you know, I love that's getting stressed in this conversation is that it is, development is not a one size fits all for the neighborhoods of the city. It really is unique to that space and really does require the input and the voices of the residents that live there.
Thank you. I love that answer. And can't wait to take you on a tour. But I have to be honest, I was advocating, I said, you know, we have representatives from the state in the West End. You could put one of them on on the board because I wanted somebody southwest of the river on the on the board. But I have a feeling you're going to fight for us really hard, too. So.
Representative D Z sits right behind me on the house floor, so I'm sure he'll be in my ear if there's anything that's going on.
Literally and figuratively. Yeah, I I would touch on some of the stuff I said earlier in terms of the experiences that I've had, you know, throughout my career in in terms of bringing different perspectives on the development process, you know, to the table, as well as kind of aspects of economic development. You know, my time working in Pittsburgh, I've been fortunate to work in a number of different neighborhoods, whether that was through PHDC and work that we've done, you know, in in the West End to larger projects, you know, in the East to, you know, working on, I can remember Councilman Cog Hill when we toured to get the 1600 Broadway property, right, under control and moving those things forward. So I enjoy that that ability to to kind of work at that neighborhood scale, project tactical level. And then, you know, to echo some of what Representative Inomorado said, how do we use that to inform policy moving forward? And I think that applies to the way in which we think about, you know, policies that the U R A adopts, the way that the board thinks about the decisions that we make, the investments that we make, and, you know, how we're using those as leverage points to deliver things that the community wants to see. And we do that through listening. You know, I'm always happy to go and tour the neighborhoods. That's some of the best part of the the job and, you know, getting to go to community meetings and having those experiences. Certainly, in the last three years, you know, is one of the things that I've missed the most about not being in city government. So I'm excited to be able to do that and engage again. You know, I think at a high level, having sort of that balance of technical knowledge and background. But and I like to think an ability to sort of see and hear all sides of things and how we approach and structure, you know, agreements and projects, et cetera, is a skill that I've been able to utilize in my career thus far, and I'm looking forward to being able to do that from the the board level of the Authority as well.
So I'm curious if City of Pittsburgh would annex to Wilkinsburg. I'm curious about this because, you know, we've struggled to get our share on our side of town now. So we hear that they want to increase, you know, the development in Wilkinsburg. What happens to our side? Are we going to be fighting for those dollars? Or is somebody going to be advocating or putting a plan in place to make sure southwest? I mean, I would certainly hope that the U R A would have a plan in place to make sure that the southwest Pittsburgh area is included in dollars that, you know, we've been dedicating and sending to the city for years, for decades, and not seeing any return on our investment. And so I want to make sure that we are part of that equation. And, you know, and I also worry about the people of Wilkinsburg. I mean, they want to make sure that they are not pushed out of their homes. And so I want to know how the, I hope that the U R A and that you'll both advocate for the U R A to have a plan in place to address both of those issues because nobody wants to be, you know, collateral damage for somebody else's, you know, you know, investment. And so I could just go on. I'm going to shut up right now because I really, I could really go off on this one. So I'll let you.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think what you just said there, Madam President, about developing a plan is spot on, right? I, it's week three for me as well back here. So in terms of the conversations related to the annex, you know, annexation and where things stand now on sort of a merger conversation, aside from what's been reported in the press, I'm not sort of up to speed. So I apologize. I can't sort of speak to.
I'm sure Councilman Cog Hill will will update you.
Yeah, I can't speak to the specifics, but what I would say is, I think, committing to to developing a plan along the lines of what you're saying, you know, and. along the lines of what you're saying, you know, and how that, you know, impacts the thinking is appropriate, you know, and makes all the sense in the world, both from the standpoint of what the residents of Wilkinsburg, you know, want assurances towards, as well as, you know, the broader impacts, you know, across the city. But, yeah, I don't know enough of the specifics now than to say, you know, willing to have that conversation and, you know, about a plan and how that can sort of materialize.
Thank you.
Yeah. May I?
But let me just make sure Representative Onomarado didn't want to answer that. Did you want to answer anything? Okay. All right, Councilman Coghill.
I just wanted to say, I want to make clear, I supported the Wilkinsburg annexation, and I still do. But I do have the same concerns that President Kil Smith does. I do not want resources, you know, flooding into, if we do decide next year to annex with Wilkinsburg. I am definitely concerned about losing resources to that neighborhood. I tend to think that the tax rate is what holds it back. So I think private investment there is going to really settle in and help make that whole thing go. Obviously, the URA will need and probably want to play a part in there, but by all means, not by, you know, forgetting about southwest of the rivers. And it's not even forgetting about, it's getting involved in southwest of the rivers. And, you know, you and I were involved, Kyle, with, like you said, 1600 Broadway and other projects. I'm very happy with the way the URA worked with me in the past. And and I'll say, in closing, you know, you both meet the highest criteria for me. You both seem genuinely excited and want to be here. And I think you both bring, obviously, you know, Representative Inmarado, your work in the housing field is certainly going to be a big asset to the URA and moving forward. And Kyle, your knowledge of, you know, my neighborhood and others and looking at the small business and districts and, you know, Beachview's, you know, one block of South Side. So the impact we can have there overnight, and we already have, and you've seen, you know, it's moving in the right direction. So so I love both of your, you know, excitement of being here. That, to me, is a top quality. It's possible to gauge as to, you know, what different aspects, there's so many with the URA. But I'm confident that you'll both do very well in whatever ones you proceed with. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to say, maybe we'll get David Geiger to schedule a tour of southwest Pittsburgh for all of the URA Board, because, I mean, I think everyone could use them. I think the last person there was Sam Williamson. And I think everybody's always amazed in Sheridan. I'd love to take you to see this representative. In Sheridan, we have, it's called Sheridan Park Co-op. It's a housing co-op. And it's amazing. I mean, it is amazing. I remember when I took somebody there for a tour once, they're like, is this Chatham Village? I said, except for these homes, they're go for $30,000. So there's the big difference, you know, between between the price. And it's amazing, well-maintained, low crime, and yet it's in the middle of Sheridan, and people don't even know anything about it. So I'd love to take you to see all that, and I'd love to see more of that in the city of Pittsburgh, to be honest with you. And in Sheridan, and I, and I'm always so cautious. I was just saying that we're really cautious about housing when you come to talk about housing in our district and especially in Sheridan, because I, and I bring this up because I want people to realize how sensitive people are. Because people went to jail, you know, for what happened in Sheridan in terms of the housing. And so when I say that they're jaded, they have reason to be, you know what I mean? They have reason to doubt us. They don't trust government. They don't trust us being involved. And if we even say the word housing, they don't like it. So I just want to make sure that we're, you know, in tune to that sensitivity and that history that they they lived through. For me, I talk all the time. I don't want to see people pushed out of the house. My mother is 100 years old, and she was, she she lived on Wally Avenue in the Hill District, and they tore her house down and dislo, you know, she was dislocated when they built the arena. And to this day, it's still something she talks about. It's 100 years old. And that's over 60, I think about 65 years ago. But so it's really impactful, you know, what you do to people. So I just want to make sure that we're doing what's right in that regard. So with that said, I'd love to take you on the tour, and we'll see, see what you think. Good luck.
Will there be donuts? Will there be Better Made Donuts?
Yes. Somebody told you to say that.
You could start. Start with Better Made, get beetos for lunch.
That's in my district, too. Beetos is my district. Better Made Donuts is my district. Peatland is my family. Hey, if it's in Pittsburgh, there's a kale involved.
Thank you all.
Motion to recess. Thank you both for serving. Thank you.